Mark. Mark, are you ready? Okay. I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July 19, 2016, at 6:30 PM. Welcome, everyone, and I want to thank you for being here tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapini is absent in excuse. Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Snare from St. Timothy's Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
It's actually Chaplain.
We got a change.
We had a change. It's actually Chaplain Greg Aguirre.
Oh, thank you. Welcome.
Yes. Let us bow our heads for prayer. Dear God, before we begin this meeting, we ask for your presence and your guidance to bring wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to all of those gathered here this evening. As important opportunities, challenges, plans are made and discussed for this city and its decisions are also determined, may they be done with the same spirit of care and of concern that you have for each resident of our beautiful community. Bless this time, bless each mind, and especially bless each heart. In your loving name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Pledge your allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of any injustice wrong.
Thank you. We will now go to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed this evening. I see none. We move on to the proclamation item number one, ADA Awareness Day. Proclamation, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, where as the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth for the state of Florida and as in border as in ADA, the laws of the states of Florida. And whereas many organizations in Pinellas Canyon of Florida work with constituents and communities to bring forth the premise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of ADA. And whereas July 26, 2016 celebrates the 26th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, therefore, our Chris Alahuza's, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing July 26, 2016, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. We will mail this proclamation. Are any public comments on this item? You know, are there any commission comments? Okay, we move on to the presentation, which is item number two. We have a special presentation tonight for an outstanding city employee. In recognition, present to Keith Mead, Development Inspector, in honor of you unparalleled performance and exemplary dedication and service to the citizens of the City of Tarpon Springs, mayor and Board of Commissioners, City of Tarpon Springs, 2016. Please come forward. Mr. Keith.
Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to give you just a little bit of background on Keith Mead. Keith has been employed with the city as a Building Development Inspector III since May of 2014. Prior to joining the city, Keith owned and operated his own construction company in which he is a licensed building contractor. And even though he's only been with us a short time, Keith has obtained his Building Inspector certification, Building Plans Examiner certification, One and Two Family Dwelling Inspector certification, and ISA Arbor certification, all within that short two-year period. And this is extraordinary accomplishment. These items and exams are very difficult. They're intensive. They're multi-part, most of them, so it requires multiple tests for one certification. And to do this in that short period of time is just outstanding. I've been doing this for a long time, and I haven't seen that in I don't know how many years. Keith has quickly proven himself as an invaluable member of our team. His dedication, integrity, professionalism is a reason that the Building Officials Association of Florida has recognized him on June 8th at the BOAF State Conference on Clearwater Beach as Building Inspector of the Year. There's only one Inspector of the Year issued by BOAF each and every year, and to my knowledge, this is one of the first small departments that have obtained that achievement. Keith also was instrumental in assisting one of our elderly citizens here in the city and getting her roof completed. Keith was doing a routine inspection on roofs, and he was out to this residence four, five, maybe six times, and the roof just wasn't getting completed. The contractor wasn't coming back. The contractor indicated at one point that he was not going to return. I don't know if he went out of business, but he just did not return to the house. But Keith was instrumental in ensuring that the roof got completed. We had multiple code violations. Keith took the lead on this and assisted the city in getting the resources needed to complete the roof. He also inspected it and ensured that no violations remained on his own time during the weekend. The new crew only could do it on the weekend. Keith volunteered his time and did it on the weekend on his own time. Keith continually provides excellent customer service to all who he encounters throughout the workday while maintaining a professional attitude. So this is a great honor for the city, and we would just like to recognize Keith for this achievement.
Just a couple of quick words. Number one, I would like to thank first and foremost Anthony for having faith in me and hiring me for this position. I love Tarpon Springs. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Chief, this position was meant for me, and I'm meant for this position. I love City of Tarpon Springs. And if this award is only... I only got this award because the Building Department for Tarpon Springs, sitting right here, is if there was an award for the best building department in the state of Florida, they would win. Without their support and their needs to succeed, I would not be here right now. And also, I would like to thank my wife, Tracy, and my family for supporting me and putting up with me while I had to study for all these exams and so on and so forth. It's not easy, and they tolerated it, and I'm forever grateful. So from Vicky, Anthony, the entire Building Department, you too, Jim. Thank you very much for all your support and your help in pushing me to be a better inspector and to help this city. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the outstanding perspective.
Are any commission comments?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Huh?
I'd like to say something.
Okay. Commissioner Panther?
I'm sorry. Ladies first. I'll go first.
Thank you. First of all, Keith, what a great accomplishment, and you make our city proud, and we're very happy to have you here. I was curious how many inspectors are in the state of Florida that you had to beat out to get number one.
When I called the Department of Business Regulation Regulation, they estimated about 5,000.
That's amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Panther?
Thank you. Yes, it's employees like you that make Tarpon Springs what it is in City Hall. And your dedication to the job, I'm sure, has been many hours at home unpaid, and I appreciate all that you've done, and I look forward to your leadership in that department for our years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. And I echo what my fellow commissioners here have said tonight. Thank you for your dedication to the city and quite an accomplishment in just a couple of years. Really is. It's something to be very proud of. And thank you to the rest of the staff in the department for pushing him and guiding him along and for all the hard work that all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you again. We're now going to move to item number three, internal audit. Mr. Michael Seminero? Give me an arrow.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. The City of Tarpon Springs employs an internal auditing firm to do various audits for the city. Over the course of their going on five years right now, they've done a utility audit, cultural recreation audit, IT audit, purchasing audit, and now this one is a cash receipt audit that they perform for us. Their next audit is going to be an IT penetration audit. But here I have Michael Seminero from the firm of Crow Whorath to go over the cash receipt audit.
Good evening, everyone. So we did perform, as Ron mentioned, a internal audit of cash receipts at the city. This included looking at various transactions and also understanding the internal controls, policies, and procedures around how receipts are handled as they're taken into the city, how they're recorded. So we really came up with three different recommendations based on some of the testing that we did, some of the interviews that we did. Nothing that I would consider to be high risk that would put the city at risk, but there are opportunities. And I think based on my discussions with Ron, most of these recommendations have been implemented in some way, so at this point, there's not really much of a concern. However, these are items that we did come up with during our particular internal audit. So I'm going to go to page nine if you do have a copy of the report in front of you. The first one was related to lack of background check and credit checks for employees. There is a process in place where this is done when someone is hired. However, there were a few employees that were long-term employees who had been with the city for over 25 years, who were in the position of handling cash and receipts on a regular basis. There was not documentation to show that those credit checks and background checks had been done. So our recommendation to the city would be that for anyone whose job position states that they are collecting money, they're handling cash, making deposits, recording information, that there should be a policy in place where credit and background checks are done more often rather than just when they're hired. Based on the management response of the city, there is a policy that's going to be implemented, if not already implemented, where this is going to be done every five years, which is a sufficient implementation based on our understanding and our experience. The second one on page nine relates to bank deposits that were handled by employees that were in off-site locations. That might be recreation, golf course, cultural services. From a best practices standpoint, it's always better when all of the receipts, transactions, bank deposits are handled more centrally rather than having employees drive their own personal cars with bags of cash and checks to the bank on their own time. So I know that the city has implemented a process whereby there's a vault company that's I think this is effective July 1st, where rather than employees making deposits at all of these different locations, that it's being done centrally by an outside company, which is a better internal control over the processes. And as I go through, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. And then lastly, on page 11, this relates to the Recreation Center specifically. As you can imagine, there's not a lot of employees that are normally handling money at the Recreation Center. However, when we went through our testing, we would test reconciliations, how receipts were entered into the system. In most cases, those were all handled by one person, which is a segregation of duties issue, meaning that whenever someone has the ability to do everything, take in money, make the deposit, and also record the money, that could give someone the opportunity to misappropriate funds. So our recommendation would be that even though there aren't a lot of employees to have everything segregated, that there's always some second set of eyes on information that someone else prepares as it relates to cash receipts. I know that management is implementing a process where there's going to be a second set of eyes, and I know that the city clerk is also going to do random checks of the process to make sure that everything is tying together and that there doesn't appear to be any misappropriation of funds. So in our professional opinion, these are good processes to implement based on our internal audit. So those were really the three areas. Does anyone have any specific questions about the audit?
Thank you, Mr. Seminero. I do have a question. First of all, I want to thank you for the recommendations for the report that you provide us. The next audit that we're going to do is to IT.
Yes.
Being that we, you know, technology is so important nowadays, and everything that we do is soft copies and everything is computerized programs. How often do you recommend that should be done?
With, well, there's a variety of different IT audits that can be done. That's not necessarily my forte. I have a separate team that does the internal audits of IT areas, but I do know that as it relates to penetration studies, both internal and external, those are something that we recommend are done annually. That is where, and actually with our firm, we actually hire, this is going to sound a little off, but we do employ professional hackers where we have labs where we actually try to get into our client's systems to see if there are any vulnerabilities. So that's going to be actually something that we're going to be doing here at the city to make sure that there's no issues related to outside individuals trying to get into the city's systems. So I'm not sure, I don't think it's been done at the city in the past few years, at least since we've been contracted with the city. So it's probably a very good idea that we do this now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any commission comments or questions? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. I just have a question about the cash receipts. We're hiring an outside company to go and pick up at our various locations, is that correct?
Yes.
So is that done daily?
That might be a question. Better question for Ron.
The schedule currently is for the Collection Center Golf Course and Yardways three times a week and for the other locations between one and two times a week.
Okay. So it's like a Brinks-type thing?
It's not your armored car. It's a plain van that they use for coming and picking up the money, checks and cash.
And then they bring it to the bank and make the deposit?
They bring it to the vault, the Chase Bank Vault down in Tampa.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Panther, you have anything?
No.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item?
Thank you. Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I really hadn't planned to comment, but thank you, Commissioner Slattery, for introducing a loophole here in this system. You're going to use a van to transport cash and other receivables, and I don't know. I'd like to know how it's, you know, processed to make sure what's given to them is recorded properly, but there's a lot of accidents between here and Tampa, and the next thing I can see is an accident, and bags start flying out the car, and, you know, people walking along, who knows why. It just doesn't sound that secure for a municipality to, you know, be handling their cash receipts. And if we're talking about security, why it's not done more on a daily basis? I know that's for the commissioners to question the policies of the process and make their changes as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions and comments? No, we move on. We go to our concerned agenda. Item number four, attorney's fees. Five, special events, Johnny's Woodstock, August 13, 2016. Item number six, forum RD 420, RD 420 TIF, and RD 420 MMB, MMP, a warbed number 160109B, RS, furnace and install seven aluminum canopies at the outdoor plant and wastewater treatment. And number eight is to authorize execution of annual DEA test force agreement. Do you have any items that you'd like to pull? Yes?
I'd like to discuss item number five.
Number five? Yes.
I just want to say, it's not that I'm going to disapprove this item, but the city, the chamber, the merchants association have always worked very well together to plan events so that they don't coincide with each other and that they are successful. We've tried not to compete against each other. On that same date, at the same time, Hippie Fest is going on in the Sponge Ducks, it's the fifth annual event. It was being held downtown and on the docks, and the merchants association decided to just do it down, I mean, on the docks this year because it was more successful, and we didn't want to compete against each other. And I see this event is going on at the same time, and I have nothing against Johnny or your restaurant, but I just would like in the future to think about scheduling events that don't compete with each other. And, you know, maybe it won't, but it's something we've worked on very hard to try not to have happen in the past, and we've been successful and done very well with that. And I just want to make sure that the insurance and the alcohol permits are accepted and acceptable for this event. Thank you.
Thank you. But I do have a question on that, and I agree with you. There should be, we should work together to make sure everybody is on the same page, but don't we have, don't we have events going on at the same time in downtown and at the Sponge Ducks?
We do plan them as the chamber and merchants association and city. This is an individual business owner having this event, so it's not something that he's planned with the chamber, the merchants association. So as a city, we try to work together to not have competing events and make sure that we have them on the schedule for the annual schedule and have them all be successful because we want to all succeed in our events and don't want to compete with each other.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question on this item?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm kind of confused because I see Johnny's Woodstock, but then the AHEPA is involved as well, so can we, can?
That's a non-for-profit that's supporting.
So is Johnny's is hosting the event, and then the proceeds are going to the AHEPA as to their non-for-profit? I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, this whole event has some issues, and in fact, I might have squashed it if I had the complete ability to do it by the rules, but they're very well aware that this is kind of skirting the rules of a business and a non-profit, in my opinion, doing this sort of thing. Plus, it's on a truck route that we don't want to block out them. So they fully understand that there's not going to be a lot of these happen without some foolproof that it's the event things. I saw the time of it, really according to ordinances, it's separated enough so you can do, but it's not the greatest of times. It's very questionable on the, if we're going by the things, but they fully understand that after this one, that they fully understand that it's going to be scrutinized closer and that we're not going to have a lot of these and stuff coming in conflicting. So they do understand in the process before it's even brought to you when I came into it, so they fully understand that after this, there'll be more scrutiny of the events like this.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Mark, I mean, when I look at this initially, I mean, I have no problem with, I don't want to call them competing events, but two events, especially, I look at Hippie Fest as a broad event, okay? And this appears to be just by the geography, Ring to Lemon Street, and I see a AHEPA, so I assume it's a smaller event and that it's meant for a specific group of people or to benefit them at least. So that's not my problem at all. I don't think that would compete per se with Hippie Fest. But listen, this is my first time hearing of there being some issues with the event. I mean, is this something that we would usually deny somebody for, or is this just something that we just, you know, is not up to the standard that we usually have?
I just think it's close, and they fully understand how it's close and that we've, this is the second one of theirs, and that there's not going to be, there'll be more scrutiny on the rest of them. But again, it's a small area, small space. We do have a problem because that's the alternate truck route, but we are in non-season, and we're in the slower times. If this would have been an event in October, November, or season where the traffic is, then we wouldn't have brought it to you because of those reasons and stuff. So at the time it is and the way it's set up right now, that's why it's okay, but they fully know that, you know, further and obviously we'll go into season after this event, so for those type of times that, you know, we'll be scrutinizing it more. And there'll have to be some serious proof that this is an event that truly profits a non-profit besides an event that truly, truly helps the business, and they will have to make that apparently clear to us before any other ones are approved there. So I think with that understanding, that is why through the Special Events Committee that we brought this one tonight, and they fully understand what's the scrutiny is going to be the next time.
As far as liability goes, if they have the proper insurance in place, that's in here recovered, correct?
Yes. Yes, they got all the, they'll have all the proper things and insurance and everything, police coverage they've hired, so they meet all the criteria of the special events for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask a question to Mr. Licuris on item number six to explain the form DR 420.
Ron, you want to give the layman's version of this thing? The layman, layman version is, this is the highest rate that we're going to be able to set the millage rate at, which is, I think since I've been city manager, we've done, we're setting the highest at what the millage rate is now with no increase. It doesn't mean that you can't lower it, but you can't go above it. Little more technical terms, Ron, just the short version.
That's almost a layman's term, but yeah, as we start the millage process, these are state-required forms that they require, the DR 420, the DR 420 TIF, and the DR 420 MMP, which stands for Maximum Millage Preliminary. And like I say, this is the start of the millage process, and like the city manager said, we're the DR 420, we're leaving it at the 5.45 millage rate. You cannot go, once the city manager signs that form, if it's approved tonight, we cannot go higher than that. We can go lower, but we cannot go higher. The DR 420 TIF is a CRA. It's just telling you the values that are within the separate CRA area. The DR 420 MMP is a form that was started about eight, nine years ago where to go over a certain mill- a certain millage rate, you have to have either over three votes or four votes or five votes of the board. We've never had to worry about that, we haven't gotten that high, but that's my layman's terms, I guess.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any public comments on these items?
Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue, I come in this part of the agenda to basically say I'll be number eight. Last time I was here, about a month ago, Orlando. This come in Thursday, two weeks ago, Dallas. I was here last Tuesday, here in City Hall, and I ran into Chief Cochin and I told him, I'm sorry, that, what, what is tearing us apart? And I told him it reminded me a lot of 1968, the times we were going through. That, if you don't remember your history, was just after the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act and a lot of changes to America that a lot of people couldn't accept. And then what? I go home, turn on the news, some guy in Michigan in a courthouse grabs a gun or however, I still haven't heard the story, but kills a bailiff and a sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Delax.
No, I'm not done, I have four minutes. This is regards to our law enforcement and this contract involves our law enforcement. Thank you, when the buzzer rings, I'll stop. Then, Sunday, guy from Missouri plans it all out and I'm watching the news yesterday, 24 hours afterwards, and the sheriff from Baton Rouge is showing these pictures of the guns this guy had. I mean, military style assault type guns. We as a people have to stop the process or whatever's necessary to get these guns out of people's hands.
Mr. Delax, I hate that I interrupted you.
I have four minutes.
I need to ask you a question, if you have any questions in regards to the, to the
It's comments on our law enforcement and this gentleman who we will provide to the DA is in danger because of the weapons that are out there. And we need to start letting our legislators and our people who have the power to do something because it not only protects us, but it protects them. If we're working with the DA, we know who we're dealing with, you're working with undercover and you're going to deal with people with weapons. Got to get these guns off the street for our officers, for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delax. Are there any questions, any other questions on these items? No. Any commission comments? Chair will entertain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis?
Yes. We now go into the item number nine, resolution 2016-26, budget resolution.
Resolution 2016-26, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2015-16.
Mr. Licorice?
Ron Harret will present that to you.
Hi, good evening again. Budget resolution 2016-26, and what we're trying to do here is any items that were approved during the year, just trying to get it into the budget process here, the certain items that are on here, mostly grants and like I say, items that have come up during the year that were not in the original budget, but now we're getting them into the budget and they were probably previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. If you have any questions on them, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harret. I want to thank you for meeting with me and discussing this report, but I do have one request from you, if it's possible. The explanation page, which is the front page that you usually give us, is any way that you make that to a spreadsheet format that you can have several columns, one will be the item, the currently budget, and another column will be the increase of or decrease, and then the fourth column, it can be where the, the funding will come from, that'll be easier that you can look at the one page and have the whole information.
Would that be easier than the doc, looking at the document behind it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
If it's possible.
We can do that.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Panther?
Just my, my usual questioning, so I assume that these extra items, the ones that are expenses, do they affect the, the, the reserve fund? Were they all worked in or?
Like for the general fund, there was nothing coming out of the reserve fund.
The reserve, were there, were any of these items coming out of the reserve fund?
No.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No. Are there any public comments on this item? CNN, I want to entertain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis?
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2016-27, building development reorganization.
Resolution 2016-27, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the Building Development Department, specifically the creation of a new position with associated position description and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you.
As Anthony comes up, let me explain this to you because I've done this several times for budget process. This is a position that is in the budget you're going to see next week, is already in the balanced budget I'm going to bring you next week. It's already in there. The reason I'm bringing it to you early is, one, he needs this position now. And now might be a problem because it's a very competitive field. These services and building expected at the city managers conference are the number one most difficult position to get and hire. So why I'm bringing this to you in advance of budget is that we want to get started on the hiring process now to hopefully by October and the new budget starting, you know, if we get the right person sooner, we'll be fine with those things, but we think it's going to take some time and again, it's, buildings in, in his, positions in his field are the toughest in the state for a city to fill. Obviously, he's going to explain to you the statistics, why we have to have this. So again, I'm bringing it to you pre-budget, it's in there, it's the number one position that's identified for the budget and one that we have to have, no matter what we have to cut. I've worked it in, it's worked into the budget with some of the other ones, so I'll turn it over to Anthony to give the notes and bowls of the position and what that's actually going to do for us out there and who'll give you those numbers that y'all pretty much know, but so the public and everybody else knows what numbers we're looking at and why we need that person on board.
Thank you. Currently, we have a projects coordinator and the responsibilities of this individual is projects oversight, pay requests, plan review and a multitude of additional duties. In addition to the responsibilities, they have assumed the role of site inspector. Site inspector really is allowed into the field. This individual should be in the field 90% of the day. And what it does, it has a complete oversight of all of our sites. So anything that goes, infrastructure under the ground, roadways, water, sewer, sidewalks, retention ponds, lift stations, right now, our projects coordinator is dividing up his time and trying to make it out to these site inspections. But with a dedicated site inspector, this individual will be in the field 90% of the day. And in doing so, our projects coordinator now has caught a multitude of items that without being in the field, stuff gets, gets missed and it will not be built to our plans. I know we don't like to say it, but the contractors will look for any excuse to cut corners in any reasonable manner and they do so. But with this individual in the field, we are very confident that all of our sites will be complying to our standards as well as state and the building code. What you, in the backup, you have a graph that indicates Building Development Department and you can see the steady increase in permits and inspections that we've been experiencing over the last five years. And as of 2016, our current inspection rate, we're at 6205 for a matter of a small department, with a projection will, should be over 7,500 inspections. And this is inclusive of our site inspector. Without a site inspector, to try and deviate our building inspectors to assist is almost impossible. They do not have that kind of expertise when anything goes under the ground. This dedicated person will have that knowledge and the licensure that I would require to be able to perform these duties without any issues. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any commission comments or questions? Commissioner Slattery?
I don't have any questions. I just, you know, I looked at these numbers here and the graph and, and it's, it's amazing how, how many permits issued and inspections are done each year and how much it's increased from 2012 till now and it is evident that we do need to add somebody to the department. So, you know, I would support this request, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I have to agree, it's an amazing amount of increase from 2013 to 2016 here and I believe it's absolutely necessary to have this position. If I hear any complaints, it's usually timing of how long it takes for permitting from business owners especially and, and I know that it's very important, you know, because time is money. I wondered if this new online process with applications, if that's helped in your department? Have you seen any help in that yet?
Yes, Commissioner. We currently take online permits and also inspections, so they can also schedule their inspections up to five days in advance. And currently, we're just about, we're in the testing phase of the IVR phone system, which also will be an asset, they could do the same thing, do our inspections and research, everything on the phone system as well.
That's a great addition, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tony, I want to thank you, but, and I do support the creation of, of this position and to have a supervisor to look at the speak project especially. Mr. Licorice answered the question that I have, if funding was available, you say yes. Also, when you're doing, when you go through the hiring process, if you look and see if we can promote with the, with the insight, would be, be good to do that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I know that Mr. Licorice does that as well. Are there any public comments on this item? Here and on? Roll call, please. No, excuse me, I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis?
Yes. We now go to the item number 11, which is resolution 2016-21, application 16-32, Bay Shore Heights final plat.
Resolution 2016-21, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat, application number 16-32, Bay Shore Heights partial replat, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon and providing for an effective date.
Licorice, you got the floor?
Yes, I'll turn it over to the planning director Heather to present this, please.
Mayor, Board of Commissioner members. My name is Heather Earler, I'm the Planning and Zoning Director and essentially this is the final stage for the Bay Shore Heights partial replat. A number of years ago, this started through the process, it's languished somewhat as a result of the economy and a number of issues. As a result, they are coming forward, they are asking to bond the project in the amount of a little over $3 million to allow them to move forward so that they can actually sell the lots. So at this time, they've met all of our criteria, the final plat is consistent with chapter 1, 177 of the Florida statutes and as a result, staff is recommending approval of resolution 2016-21. And I can answer any questions that you may have, if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here and on, any commission comments?
Commissioner Seber?
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Heather. I had some residents who had some concerns about the raising of the Bay Shore Heights and how much higher it was over, for example, Loqua, which is where the residents were, had their concerns and possible flooding on Loqua because of Bay Shore Heights being so much higher. And I can understand their, their concerns and I know that there was a meeting, I'm glad Anthony's still here, that Anthony met with those residents and I was not able to go, but I, I never found out the results of the, of the meeting, but I know that there's probably an assurance that their plans do include proper drainage and, or as far as their height.
That is correct, there is, there is thing, and with the bond that we have in place, those construction drawings that we actually have in-house that we have actually approved will have to be done and provided, if not, we'll have that bond information, so we'll be able to complete that project if the developer were to walk away. We have every assurance that developer is not going to walk away, that they're going to complete that project, they have a vested interest in, in completing that project moving forward. So I can bring up Anthony if you'd like to ask him specific questions, because I wasn't at the meeting either.
Yeah, no, I just wanted assurance for these residents that came to me with these concerns that, you know, they, they see the difference from their property to the Bay Shore Heights property and obviously it looks like they could have flooding issues, so I wanted to make sure that that was checked in too.
Anthony, can you just assure him what your inspectors have been doing on that project and how you set up a liaison and the process you set up, just briefly?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, we did meet actually with Steve Wire also onsite and we met with a relatively large group of the local residents. And what we assured them at that time was, they were concerned, they had multitude of concerns, but they were worried about the elevation differential and during that, in that differential area, that the water would come down and flood the street. What the city has done in this aspect was, when this project was coming through, we asked their engineer again to take another look at the project to ensure that the calculations were correct. We reviewed the project internally with Steve Wire and also we had our outside stormwater engineer review the project above and beyond, just to ensure that all those residents are protected. At the meeting, that was still their main concern. So with Steve being the point person, Steve Wire, we indicated that we'd be happy to have a meeting with those residents, they emailed Steve and if they would still like to have the meeting, we would have the outside engineer come in, our stormwater engineer and also the engineer for the project and we would be there to answer any questions above and beyond. But they were pretty much satisfied by the time we left.
I appreciate you taking that extra effort because I know they were concerned and came to me about it, so thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Tony, I have another question relating to that. There are many heavy duty equipment going through the road, big trucks using Sunset Road, using Bay Shore, I don't know if they're using Bay Shore, but I know they're using Loqua. Are these people going to make any repairs for the things that will be damaged?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Steve's on top of that. He's out there daily and checking the routes, making sure. We've already issued, I think, two letters indicating that damages were received and they are responsible to repair them.
So that will hold them responsible during the final inspection, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Another question? Chair will entertain the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis?
Yes. We are now going to item number 12, discussion on Athens Street configuration. Mr. Licorice, if you please explain the project and the concerns of the people there?
Yes, pretty much a large portion of the project is already resolved, how we're going to do it, because most of it's just the enhancement of sidewalks, the walkways and, you know, a large portion of the project is very easy, simple and there's no contention on. The only place that there's a contention on is the continuation of what we did on Athens Street. If you remember in the Sponge Dock, one project, we added that first block of Athens where we removed the parking, added more sidewalk, put trees and landscaping. The original intent and was in the Athens Hope Street project, which again is more extensive than you see, we're just showing you the only item of contention. And basically, I mean, And basically, I mean, there are some different ways, but basically, one side of the street wants to keep the parking that is there. Obviously, if the parking is kept there, then we can't extend the sidewalks and we can't do a lot of things we can do. I want to thank Gary Sherman. Believe me, one of the next purchases we're going to have is a program, so we make these better, but Gary Sherman kind of gave these pictures to you in your backup to kind of show you what the two looks are. And it's a simple thing, there's been multiple meetings, and we just can't resolve. And the only reason we'd even bring this to you as a commission is, you know, it's going to have to be resolved, because there are two strong sides and strong feelings on whether that parking should be kept or not kept. One item that came up just today, and a factor is, and the pictures don't show it and stuff, but these, if we remove the parking, it would probably not include the last two spaces, which are the loading zone for National Bakery. If you remember, or maybe you don't, it might have been beyond, most of you commissioners, but a while ago, and I know Major Young, I think, for the police department, involved for safety, we moved their loading zone from their side of the street to the other side of the street. From what I know, that those spots probably won't be able to be moved, but that's just the last two, and really won't affect the whole project of removing the rest of the parking places from the sidewalk. So again, the decision has to be made, and again, the people here from both sides are here to tell you, again, to remove the parking, there's a lot we can do with trees, with expanding rooms for sidewalk cafes, and sprucing it up. If it's not done, we can still spruce up, fix the sidewalks, put the light poles in, but nowhere near extensive, because obviously, not having that extra space, we can't do what you see there. So basically, our groups that have meetings there have heard from both sides. There is no compromise to the side, so unfortunately, it has to come to you tonight to hear both those sides and make a decision. The project's been delayed, and again, this will be, these designs are just rough, they'll be designed a lot better and professionally. When that decision is made, obviously, we weren't going to spend the money to design it if we didn't know which way we're going to go. This is just to give you kind of a picture example of the things we can do either way. So I think the best method to do it is hear the both sides that we've been hearing for the last year, and then we need to make a decision on which way we're going to go with it, and so we can start the progress and prove that last piece of the little walkable community picture to go all the way from downtown, down Safford, through the docks, and then the Hope Street, Athens corridor, going back to the downtown, and complete those sidewalks, walking areas, and the streetscape.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to, actually, before we have public comments, I'd like to say that this is a project that we wanted to do for many years. That project will provide walkability, and the project is designed to connect the two business communities, the Sponge Docks with the Bayou and the downtown. We've been working on that for a long time, and I believe this project will help us to do, to provide this connection between the two business communities. Now, I would like to ask if there's any public comments on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Anita Protas, 901 Bayshore Drive. These programs have been since I was Commissioner in the 80s. And we worked with different individuals and business owners in the Sponge Docks, and we were very successful with grants. I don't have a business there, but I honor the Greek community there. It's what's made Tarpon Springs through the early years into what it is today. The Sponge Dock area, to me, is the St. Augustine of Tarpon Springs. It's our historic value. We have been commended all over the world for our Sponge Docks. They come from all over the world to see the Sponge Docks, because you don't find a Greek community anyplace else in the United States like you do in Tarpon. We are the melting pot of Greek heritage in the United States. I hope, in your plans, that you work with the historic boards and not take away a lot of the historic flavor that our forefathers brought over here. I understand that you have to freshen up and spruce areas, but we do have the old buildings there. I'm 74 years old. I remember sitting on the benches in front of the Cavaklis Coffee Shop, and the cars were coming through. They've always had parking on that street. I'm glad to hear that you're going to leave the loading zone for National Bakery and for the Food and Wine, because they need it to load up for their deliveries. That is a very important item for these businesses. But let's not kill our businesses on Athens Street. The men, and I will say, in the coffee shop, park their cars and leave them there. I've been here before saying, let's do like they do in St. Pete and on Clearwater Beach. Mark the tires with the chalk, have the police come through. If they haven't moved in an hour, give them a ticket. After they spend a lot of money, they won't leave their cars there all day, because people need to get into the bakeries, they need to get into the specialty shops to get what they need to have and purchase. Please be very cautious. Let's not lose what we've got there, what makes our Sponge Docks so unique. You can still leave the old, work with your historic groups here in Tarpon, and it can still connect. Personally, I want to leave the parking on Athens Street, because it has an exciting history through the years of things that have happened between the Greek and non-Greek community with the cars there. I remember there was a man here in Tarpon who sold Belita tickets, and they came from Tarpon to get them from this coffee shop, and they had parked their cars there. Years ago, people would be driving without a license, and the police back then would go down there and confiscate their cars. It was all exciting, because we didn't have what we've got today, media and TV and all the things. But times change. You still have your old businesses, you still have the bakeries there, you still have the coffee shops there. That's what people want to come and see. And if we modernize too much, we're going to lose it. And once you lose it, you can't bring it back. Flowers are important, flower pots are important. Just be very cautious, that's all I ask, because when I'm gone in 10 or 15 years, I'd like to come back as a ghost in 50 to see what's happened to Tarpon Springs. But let's keep what we've got. Go to St. Augustine, look what they've done in the old city. They haven't done too much with their streets and their sidewalks, they've left it. And that's why the people come to Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments? Please come forward. State your name and your address for the record, and you're given five minutes, four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Irene Mikalev. I'm here from Agora Food Market at 602 and 604 Athens Street. Before my time starts, I would just like to have some backpedaling to tell you why exactly I'm here. Gary Sherman came to me June 30th and asked if I can speak to the owners on my side of Athens Street and see what they wanted to do with parking. I did that, and I did turn that into Gary. I have that printed if... That's, there's enough copies for everybody there. Everybody on the side that I spoke to does want these parking spaces on Athens Street to remain. Most of these owners are here today, and they'll express to you why they want the parking spaces to remain. The only person that is not here today that is listed on that sheet is Kelly Spilotes. She is in Greece. She obviously can't make it here. But I did get a letter from her expressing that she does want the parking spaces to remain, and here's a copy for everybody. I do have the originals, so if anybody does want to see those, I'll be more than happy to provide those. Like I said, my family owns Agora Food Market at 602 and 604 Athens Street. We've been in this location for about three years. Parking is tremendous for us. We need it there. We cannot afford to lose the eight parking spaces that we're talking about today. We were granted one temporary parking when we first opened three years ago. That was taken back last year. We knew it was going to be taken away. It has impacted our business negatively. We still have customers coming in and complaining why there's no parking, where are they going to park? We need this to survive. We need our customers to have somewhere to park. We can't expect them to come to our stores and pay $3 and $5 to park in the parking lots. Yes, they are available, but that's just not reasonable to expect customers to do that. We have customers that come twice and three times a week. We can't expect our customers to pay prices like that. We need those parking spaces to remain. We need them for our business, to make sure that our customers come in and they're somewhere for them to park. Without these parking spaces, I'm pretty confident that our business is going to be impacted even more. So I'm here begging you, pleading with you, please leave these parking spaces where they are. Thank you.
Mr. Salivares, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name, Andres Salivares, 195 Riverside Drive. I own three places in the Sponge Docks. But I want to tell you something. Could I agree with Anita? I agree with the beautiful lady who was speaking before me, but I'm going to say something to all of you. If you want to know who's parking on the spaces on the Athens Street, you come in the morning. We have to turn to our employees not to park if we want parking on the Athens Street. The only people who are parking at Athens Street and the Sponge Docks in the morning is our employees. Why want to teach them that? Why want to tell them to park someplace else? I agree with Anita, we don't have to change the flavor of Sponge Docks, but we have to remember something. We have to do something, because every day I heard for the Big Fumara State, what happened to the Sponge Docks? What are we doing for the Sponge Docks? What are we doing in Athens Street? I'm making a recommendation to the mayor the other day. We have empty lots in Athens Street. I can mention now to the lot, city, he can list the lot, he can have plenty parking for all the stores in Athens Street. John Chavaris parking behind my bakery. We have two places, two more parking places we're for sale, but if we don't want to buy it, let's we listen. Let's the cities pay some money to listen, to make lease, so that way, we can park, and we have plenty parking in Athens Street. But we don't. We complain today. We complain because we don't want to change the habits, including myself. I park in the front to the Food and Wine. Why we don't? Even I have parking behind my store. That's the bad habit. Let's we teach them, let's we tell our employees to park someplace else, let them, customers, to come to parking Fumara Town. Like I said to Anita, Anita is one of my best friends in Tarpon Springs, family friend. Let's we change a little bit. Let's we make the city a little bit better, not change the flavor. Not change the flavor. We upscale it better than Tarpon Springs. I said before, and I will repeat again, and again and again. Every time mayor somebody say, oh, Andres has come, you know, to punch my head.
That's not true.
That's the truth, because every time I complained to him. If we think Tarpon Springs, Sponge Docks is upscale, I complained to the city manager many times. Let's we change. What I mean, we change for the better, for the better. For six parking, six spaces for the parking is nothing. We have law and unload space, yes. We can have outside to pause tables and chairs, yes. Let's we make it Mediterranean, let's we make it more Greek. If we wanted to say, we are Greeks, let's we do that. Let's we make it a little bit different, more upscale. We have to do our own less, not individual, not only Andres or somebody else. Every single one for the Sponge Docks, they have to help the city to do better, to do better. And I don't want to say more, because if I say more, you think, you know, I'm talking too much. But I do, I talk, you know, to myself sometimes and the Sponge Docks for the customers. And I want to ask one more thing for the city manager and chief. We need a police officer every day on the Sponge Docks. We need a special at the weekends. We don't have to be policemen on the Sponge Docks if we have accident, especially weekends. I'm asking you, and I'm telling you, because the chief is here so you can hear. And then, if we have laws, rules, we have to endorse them, the rules. We have to take care of the rules. We have place, we have unique city. Let's we keep a unique city, but we keep it clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salivares.
Hi, guys, how are you? Good evening. My name is Nina Georgiou, and my family owns 614 and 614 and a half Athens Street. My family's been there since 1989, so we've been there for quite some time. I want to say that I definitely want to keep the parking on Athens Street. I have a lot of customers complaining that they don't want to spend the $3 to park, and I get that. I completely get that. And I definitely want to keep the originality of Athens Street. I agree with Anita. Keep the flavor, make it how St. Augustine is, and keep it true. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. My father has the National Bakery.
Would you please state your name and your address for the record?
971 Wheatwood Terrace. My father has this business for 21 years, the National Bakery. 80% of our customers, they're local people. They want the parking, to get just the bread. That's an everyday thing. We're seven days a week open. The local people, they want their own parking. They want to just stop in front of the bakery, get the bread, just to park for two or three minutes. They're Greek people. They want their own parking. They want to be comfortable, just get the bread and leave. They don't want to stay in the street and talk. Please keep the parking. You can put the flowers, the trees, whatever they want to put, to make it beautiful and everything, but please keep the parking, because we're going to lost all the local people. The National Bakery is working 21 years with the local people, not for the tourist, not only for the tourist. Please keep the parking, so we can keep our customers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, city manager, our police chief, and wonderful commissioners. My name is Maria Claneras. I live at 346 West Winds Drive in Palm Harbor. My husband, Mike Claneras, and I own some of the property there on Athen Street, and the bakery is one of our tenants. But I understand that load, those two spaces are going to be kept, which I think that probably answers Katina's situation, and that's wonderful. Everything I was going to say, I mean, I just heard that today, and that's wonderful, and that was really truly my main concern. But I just found out about this. I didn't know June 30th or anything like that. I just found out about this Thursday night, and that was only because I stopped in to pick up my bread. And Katina mentioned it to me. In thinking about all of this, I spoke with my sister, Anna Samarkas, and we've kind of, we did a little bit of research, and we didn't get, we didn't even realize what you were doing, Mr. LaCuris, you know, with regards to the street. But we kind of came up with something, and we'd like to tell you about it now if we could. My sister will just take a few minutes. Anna Samarkas.
Good evening. My name's Anna Samarkas, and I live at 18 South Park Avenue. I'm here to support those who feel that parking is imperative to their business and the property owner's success. I reviewed the proposal and walked Athen Street from cross to mill. I measured the area targeted for beautification. Although, I am for making this area nicer to pedestrians, I am also mindful of what removing parking would mean, excuse me, to these businesses who already do not have an adequate amount. Picture one depicts the current state of activity and commerce. In my attempt to understand the codes, I looked for relevant information, excuse me. My understanding is that this area falls under the city base code. This particular code applies to the Sponge Docks area and replace the development code that applies in the other areas of the city. I've attached that for your review also. The parking requirement is explained in Appendix B, Chapter 4, Lot and Building Plans, Page 49, Table 4, EII, which says, "Retail should have 3.0 parking spaces, excuse me, per 1,000 square foot of building area." In any scenario, parking is required. I then looked at the proposed Athen Street on-street parking, which was pictured online. This seems to be an excellent alternative, but it doesn't have the sidewalk extension. If indeed the ultimate desire is to extend the sidewalks, have benches, and for the owners to keep the parking, I ask you to look at Photo 2, which is a drawing. This will accommodate everyone's desire. The proposal is yet again another alternative. It utilizes one-way traffic that will allow for the extension of the sidewalks, the benches, and the plants, plus it supports even more parking spots along one curb, which is truly necessary. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Thank you, Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I haven't heard all the constructive criticism of all the people yet to speak, but we did hear some things here that really give you some other options. And first off, at the present time, as it stands, you need to keep these parking spaces. And as these merchants mention, we, the locals do need that. I went the other day and bought some olive oil. Now, if I go buy olive oil and I have to park and pay three dollars, well, sorry to say it, if I have to pay three dollars more, I can probably go down to Acropolis where there's parking on Court Street that the city provides and not have to pay it. Or, how about a better example? Greek coffee, $9.99. I can go to Winn-Dixie and buy it $9.59, and I have a big parking lot, but I don't go there because I want to support my local businesses. Now, Ms. Anita here mentioned something that I think can be easily accomplished. Two-hour parking limit on Athen Street. Two hours gives local people plenty of time for what they need to do. The tourists who know they're going to shop and eat and be there longer, they don't have a problem going to a lot. Solve that real quick about the Coffineos. Either that or they'll be shuffling cars every two hours. Second, Mr. Salivares gave you an option, and I was thinking about it even before that came up. There's a cut just south of his building where the hockey market was. If you bought the back end of the parking lot behind there, you could get the easement, create an access way, and you'd have a parking lot right behind all these businesses that you would have maybe a block and a half or so to walk to. So there are solutions other than just wiping out the parking. But if you were to accomplish that parking lot, and it's close enough in proximity, so it's sufficiently efficient for locals and others to still shop at that area, then at some future date, you may consider limiting parking on Athens. But at the present time, the way it's set up, no. But I would say, before you truly, you know, you need to relook at how you can provide better access and better parking down there, because, you know, the tourists are fine, but, you know, we like to support our local businesses, and it helps to be able to stop and not have to park down by Cedar Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
A bit short for this. Hi, my name's Helen Kishadis. I'm the owner of Athens Coffee Shop on Athen Street. My concern is, you keep saying that you want to sprout it up and make it prettier at Athen Street. If you do take that car parking space away, what's going to happen to my customer that comes? Most of them are over 70. Seventy percent of them are disabled. So I'm going to lose that income straight away, because they're not going to be able to park, even if they could afford it, that three-dollar parking fee, because they won't be able to walk down to my coffee shop. And another concern I have, now you want to take the parking away, later on in the future, are you thinking of stopping all traffic down Athen Street? Is that in your near plans? I'm asking a question. Do you think that's going to happen? Because if that does, then we will be totally out of business. And you're saying you want to put flowers, you want to put benches. Why don't we think of fixing those drains? Because when the rains come, my coffee shop gets flooded. And there's a stench out there? Let's, before we put in plants out and chairs, let's fix the drainage, and don't take those. If you take that car park space away, my disabled customer, my old little Greek man is not going to be able to come to the coffee shop and have his coffee. And that's not fair. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stelios Megadakis. I have Kostas Restaurant on Athen Street.
What's the address, please?
The address? Oh, 521 Athen Street. I've heard some of the complaints, some of the issues, and a lot of them are true. There is a parking issue that we have on Athen Street, but maybe there's some median or something, we could meet somewhere in the middle, and maybe, I haven't looked at the plans, but one of the biggest problems we always see on Athen Street is why we can't get people to walk down. When years ago, three, four, five years ago, when they took the parking spots out of the first section, it was because a lot of those businesses said, "You can't see our business." Because there was cars, trucks, vans, everything blocking. They took the parking out, and then later on, you guys extended the sidewalk. And it looks 100 times better than the back end of Athen Street, where Paul starts across from my building to Furnos and down. Those three spots there, like Andy says, "I see it every day because I'm across the street," is all coffee shoppers or employees who are parking there. It's not customers, it's not my customers, it's not any customers who really park there. If there was a median to meet somewhere in the middle to maybe not go far down to affect Nationals Bakery, it's something maybe you guys can look at with your schemes to keep the rest of those parking spots and maybe just take three away. It would beautify that section of the street, just like the first end. If you ask those businesses in the first end, "You want to put the cars back?", I bet you they wouldn't want the cars back there, because it looks so much better when you walk down Athen Street. That first section is amazing, with the benches, with the extended sidewalks, with the safety for the customers. And originally, when this came through, I didn't know they were going all the way down, but I simply said, "How about to Furnos to do it, so we can just continue to be like Dodecanis? Dodecanis, there's no spots on there either. People walk around, they shop, they buy things there too. They park and they walk. People buy when they walk." You know, you can look into the parking issue of leasing one of these parking lots. That's, you know, something you guys can look at, but three spots to take out, I think, is worth what we get out of it, and that means beautifying the street. We want to keep our old charm, like a lot of people said, but, you know, sometimes you need to sacrifice something to get something out of it, and I think those three spots are worth it, taking it out, as long as you guys beautify it with benches and palm trees and let people walk a little further down the street. That's one of the problems we have. They don't come all the way down. They stop right at that corner, and they turn around. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Juan Rosa, 530 Athen Street, Paul's Shrimp House. I've heard a lot tonight. I really wasn't ready to speak today. But those three parking spots, can't tell you how many times I see an old lady get out of her car, go over to Agora, get her cheese, whatever she needs. How many times I've walked in to buy something, helping a customer to their car. Three-dollar parking around the block. Average person walking to our places, late 40s and up. It's a long walk in the heat. You know, people stop in every day. I see it, I watch it. I'm guilty of parking in those spots. A lot of other people are guilty of parking in those spots. I've put it to my employees that they are not allowed to park in those spots. I'm a small business. I don't have the resources to get companies to come out and deliver food to my building. So I do a lot of the shopping, and yes, I pull in the spots. I unload, and I normally park somewhere else. Taking those parking spots away for us small business people, where are we supposed to get ours? We don't, when we do get deliveries, we don't have huge trucks come down, our little box trucks that pull up. Do you expect them to go around the block and deliver all their product? My fresh fish exposed to the sun and the heat. We are in Florida. It's hot. I see more people, more locals, parking in those spots than tourists. Of course, you get the tourists that come through. We're grateful for their business, but we don't want their business. We want our local community to support us. We don't want them to go out to Winn-Dixie and Publix and Walmarts and this and that. We want them to shop here at home. We want them to eat here at home. A lot of us don't have parking. Really, there's only one spot on Athens that has parking, and that is Kostas. Yes, we do need more things to lead people towards our businesses, absolutely. I'm with making it look beautiful, but I'm also about the history. History goes a long ways. As I see from an outsider coming in, the Greek community here, they have their differences just like any other community, but when they need to band together, they band together. Like I said, these, taking away these spots may not affect Paul's Shrimp House, but it's going to affect Anita. It's going to affect Furnos Bakery, okay? These customers that come out, they've been in Tarpon Springs forever. They speak to me in Greek. I don't understand. I say hello. I say goodbye. I love you, I'll give you a hug. That's the kind of person I am. I love it here in Tarpon Springs, to be honest with you guys. And I come by and I, Nina, I wish Nina was here. Nina reminds me of my grandmother. I think that's one thing that kept, that like, I was going through a long time where I lost my grandmother, and I saw Nina's face, and she gave me a smile and a hug. Guys, I know my time's up, but let's keep these spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments on this item? Please come down. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. I am Dimitra Savaris-Likourezos. I am the young, I, my business is/was Given With Love, 520 Athen Street. For medical reasons, I'm in the process of closing my business. I am the youngest of the Savaris siblings. I believe next to the Belirises, we own the largest commercial footprint in Tarpon Springs. As you know, a lot of it is all fenced off. Over the years, that has happened for, to prevent people from leaving vehicles overnight, for dumping garbage, for leaving sexual paraphernalia that has been used, I mean, all kinds of things that we've been fined for over the years. Forgive me for saying this, but a lot of the business owners, when you rent your store, it is with the understanding that you do not have your own parking facilities. So to complain about not having parking just seems silly to me. I'm sorry for saying that. My business was a different breed. I was a specialty shop. I catered to the Greek community as far as our Greek weddings, our Greek baptisms and such, and I had people coming from all over to purchase from me. I also, because of the type of shop I had, had many tourists come in, enough tourists come in, I should say. I did have my own parking in the back, as does Furnos, he rents from us. The point that I'm getting at is, when you come on Athen Street from Dodecanis and you hit that bend in the road, it's pretty, it's inviting, you see the storefronts, people have their things outside. You come around that bend at Paul's Shrimp, it dies. There's an invisible wall that's up, and people do not pass that. When I opened my shop, I had requested from the city if I can have a bench put in front so people can sit and have an ice cream cone or a drink or whatever, and I was denied it because there was no, there's not enough, it's not wide enough sidewalk there. What has been going on on Tarpon Avenue as far as the beautification, what has been going on on Hibiscus is lovely. I would love to see that continue up Athen Street. And I am speaking for my siblings. I spoke with, I only found out about what was going on this morning, and I called all of them and emailed them and texted them, and they are all in agreement with me. And there's four of us, so I just thought I'd share that. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments on this item? Okay. Any commission comments? Mr. Panther?
Mark, so we're setting tonight based off the designs that you submitted to us, or we can do something different, correct?
Yeah, that's just to give you, those were just...
Yeah, that's just to give you, those were just rudimentarily made up to give you a visual of of what is going on. And of course, to show the difference of what you can do with the space. Obviously, it's a space issue. Obviously, with more space, now that's not to say if the parking's left that we can't try to make it as much as possible. We're just limited by the space aspect.
I mean, generally, I'm opposed to taking away parking anywhere in Tarpon Springs unless it's a specific situation, just because of the nature of the lack of parking we have. I think we had some good ideas tonight about looking into leasing some more parking space. Ms. Marcus brought for this plan as well about making Athens a one-way street. That could be talked about as well in the future. But as I stand here now, I would not be in favor of taking away parking from Athens Street. And, you know, we can still try and incorporate some of these beautification aspects within the current structure. And then maybe down the road, look into something long-term for Athens Street that addresses some of the problems that we were told here tonight. And ways that we could expand the sidewalk footprint without losing those parking spaces. That might not be possible without this, this one-way street configuration. I'm not sure, but when I say that I'm not in favor of taking away the parking spaces, it's not that it should just be done and that's it. But maybe continue the, continue the conversation about how we can help bring more traffic to Athens Street, do these beautification projects, put out benches, et cetera. But I'm not in favor of taking away any parking off Athens Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stop. Don't do that, please. Commission Salory.
Thank you. This is just a tough subject all around. Parking is very tough to find in our community downtown and on the Sponge Docks. We have complaints all the time. I did like the idea someone brought up of possibly the city purchasing or leasing, there's a parking lot, are there available parking lots down there that possibly we could look into investing in at some time? Budget is coming up right now, so maybe that's something we could think about during the budget process to help with parking. And I have to say newly, I love this idea with the one-way parking on Athens. You know, it solves all issues. There's parking on one side. We can expand the sidewalks on the other side and put the tables and chairs if we wanted to out there and benches and it solves both issues. So I think that's something that, you know, we might want to consider as well. I'm not sure if we're able to do that or not because I don't know all the specifics and whatever, but this is a great idea. When we talk about enhancing or beautifying Athens Street, we're not talking about making major changes whatsoever. We're just plants, benches, new trash receptacles, clean it up just a little bit. Make it a little more inviting. New lighting. And that's really the extent of what we're talking about here when it comes to just sprucing it up a little bit. We're not, we don't want to take the charm away whatsoever because, you know, this is our heritage down there. It's our heritage and it brings a lot of people to our community, the uniqueness of the Sponge Docks. So I definitely don't want to make any major changes other than what we're proposing here. The parking though, I did have a question about there's these three spots that I'm looking at. Well, the ones for the bakery. Is that?
Which picture are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one, proposed Athens Street with on-street parking. And it shows some plants and it's in front of Yanni's.
The second one?
Yes. Can we make those spots or do we have enough handicap spots down there? Can we make them handicap? Accessible only or?
Well, again, a lot of the questions, and I made it clear, again, we've been down there having these meetings for a long time. A whole year, a whole budget year. But we made it clear on the parking, if the parking was going to stay, that there would be changes to the parking. Because, again, I knew the arguments early, but you can't make those arguments if your business owners and your employees are parking or blocking all their arguments there. So, but whether we make them one-hour parking, 30-minute parking, two hours, that's something we do after, because my concern since October is trying to do a design to do this. Obviously, we've got a one, but that's going to be, you know, if you look at one, we have to bring that back. You're talking about three or four months down the road to get it planned, seeing what we do. You know, again, we've been trying to do these sidewalks and this pathway since October. Ninety percent of it we can do because we know what to do. And there's a lot of different plans we could do with this section. It's a great one-way plan, but you've got to consider it's a one-way. Where do you stop the one-way? Where does the traffic go down the side residential streets to go? One-way could possibly solve it, but you've got to remember the traffic, the public safety and the rerouting of traffic. But it's something you can sit there and look at, but it's not an overnight. It's going to be probably a three or four-month process we could do. Again, basically, again, if you look at the second picture, the two, the places we're talking about were removed from the bakery to the other side. You see the signs, you almost see beside, behind this car that's parked there, you can see those signs. That is the one we'd stay, that would stay in as that, those 50, those two 15-minute places. And those would have to stay, from what I understand, because of the requirement, because of us moving them from one side to the other. Those would stay. The other, whether it's eight or six or one there, if you look at the other pictures going around the corners, would be the ones that would have to go just to give you the required right-of-way to do these things and stuff. But again, it's drastic, you know. You know, you've got an area that you've got to take off and you've got to account for the two-way traffic and the safety. So, again, that's why the main situation before you can even design something along here or what you're going to do. Again, these plants and stuff are just conceptual. There's a lot of different benches and there's a lot of different things we can do either way on them. We're not showing them all on here because that's not the plan. We just got to know whether we're making the plan with parking or without. And then we can design, talk to the businesses down there, where you want benches, where can they put plants, where can we put this? We can do all that later, but we have to know where to design it for. And that's why we're at the point tonight, if we want to get on this project this year or it's going to delay another year, you know, we have to know where the design's going to be to go. And that's why it's important we make that decision.
Well, I don't think that we should postpone the plan at all. You know, we improved Dodecanese and I think we need to continue with Athens. My suggestion is putting in the lighting, the plants, some benches, receptacles and stuff like that. Leave the parking, but we need to maybe limit to two-hour parking down there. Personally, when I go down, if I'm going to get bread or something, I like to park somewhere because I do walk and I shop. But I understand that, you know, there are elderly that are not able to do that. That's part of what I like to do. I like to look in the stores. Because we don't, as locals, we don't go down there as often as we should. So when I do, I like to spend a little time. But I can understand when we have, we have a lot of elderly in our community as well. So if we could limit the parking to two hours and then, and then in the future, I'd like to see if we could look at leasing or purchasing a parking lot or maybe looking at the one-way street idea. But I don't think we should put this off. I think we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I agree that we need to move forward. Thank you all for your comments. These pictures that you provided are all from Zorbas and beyond. So we don't really have any pictures from Cross to Zorbas. And that's an area where the three parking spots are that we're talking about. There's four spots in front of Paul Shrimp House and Fournos. And one of them is the 15-minute loadings-on zone. And that's the area that Dimitra talked about and Stelios talked about, where you come around that corner and it was widened up to there and then there's four spots. I looked at this list of businesses, and so I'm a business owner down on the Sponge Docks, that Irene gave us. And of the nine businesses, six of them don't have parking in front of their stores. So they're in stores that the street and the sidewalk was widened. So they don't have parking spots in front of those stores. So that was interesting. So another suggestion would be something Stelios recommended is maybe widening the sidewalks up to Zorbas since there is a parking lot right there that maybe we can think of leasing in the future. But where National Bakery is and beyond Zorbas, leaving those spaces and just beautifying the curbs, of course, and finishing off the street. But if we could look at widening the sidewalks just where those three spots are up to Zorbas and that parking lot, that is owned-
But the last picture has that depiction on there, if you look at the last picture.
So it would be for-
And again, we could do that, but that would mean wiping out, taking out those parking spaces that you see in the last picture.
The three spaces.
The last picture has that aspect because that's Cross Street, you see, so that-
Yes, from Cross Street to Zorbas, which is basically the spaces in front of Paul Shrimp House and that one spot in front of Fournos, which is a 15-minute loading zone. But leaving the spaces, which are primarily residential and of course, National Bakery. And because they, you know, are more affected maybe. But, you know, my businesses are on Dodecanese and I don't have parking in front of my stores. And we can say the same thing. We want locals to shop at our stores on Dodecanese as well. And, you know, people, our locals, sometimes complain that they don't like to pay that $3 parking fee. But we can all have that benefit of having parking in front of our stores. So that would be the suggestion that I make, is that we widen it through, from Cross through to where Zorbas is, like to the end of Fournos Bakery. And then leave the street as it is from there and beyond, across National Bakery and the residential area.
Well, thank you. It's my turn. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight and everyone for coming up here, giving us your opinions and your ideas. It's great. We all know that we have a parking issue down at the Sponge Docks. I appreciate the ideas that Mr. Salivares came forward. As a matter of fact, Mr. Salivares and I, we went there and we looked at some lots that are available waiting on the other side that might be for sale or they might be for lease, I don't know. But in meantime, we do have any big issue for parking down at the Sponge Docks. We have three options here. One is to leave the street, on Athens Street, the way it is. The other option is to make improvements with parking on one side, as was recommended on one of the pages. Or to make improvements with no parking and have wider parking spaces. But if we look at the option number four, which is eliminate the parking spaces, you're going to have wider sidewalks, you're going to have more landscape. It's going to look nicer. It's going to be more attractive, but it will not be practical. It will not be practical having all these businesses there and knowing that you have, that you have, that they need parking in order for them to operate. If we take the business, if we take the parking away from the businesses, we're going to hurt this business. And that's not what we're here to do. We must help the businesses, our local businesses. So I would like to explore the idea that what Mr. Salivares has for the future to provide more parking in their area. I think it needs to be done. And this is something that we must work on to give for the future. But for now, I support the option that I want to keep the parking on one side in order to keep the business operating and also to keep the character of the Sponge Docks, the character of the Athens Street. So, and after the project is completed, I will ask Chief Cochin to take a look and see what time limit we can actually place on the parking spaces and make sure that the parking is there for the customers, not for people, not for the employees to go there. They can park and leave their carts for the whole day. The purpose behind all this is to provide parking for the businesses, for the customers so the local businesses are successful. So that's my opinion on that. So please go and do that. The chair will entertain a motion?
I guess motion to approve to keep all existing parking, is that?
On the one side?
On the one side.
On one side, is this?
Yes, I would motion to-
And make the improvements, as was recommended by Mr. Lakouris.
Okay, make, I would motion to make any improvements that are recommended, but keeping all existing parking spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Commissioner Panther?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis?
Yes. Well, thank you. That concludes our agenda. We now go to the staff comments. Chief Cochin?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Seat attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
Yes, as you know, we have our first budget meeting next Tuesday night. I just want to give you a preview about how I envision it. Obviously, it's your meeting, so you can do it my way or do it another way. But my suggestion is we've got a presentation that we're going to be giving to you. I do plan on bringing you a balanced budget, not using the reserves. Hopefully, I'll also have not a lot, but a little bit of discretionary money. Now, I'm not sure how much that discretionary money is, but it won't be a lot. So don't think there's a big pot. It's going to be a very little pot. But I know some of you have given me some ideas and I've got suggestions on whether we can fund them now or possibly fund them later, that. So I'll be giving you the presentation with all those things, some things each of you have brought forward. If you have other things that brought forward that you want to look at as far as projects or something, let me know in the next week or do it there. We have plenty of time before the public hearings. And just to announce to everybody, this is not a hearing for the pub, this is a hearing, this is a workshop. So this is not a meeting for public comments and public comments on the brother. That's going to come at a later time and those dates are in February. But this is a date where we'll be working with the commission to do that. So after the presentation, again, we'll discuss those things off all the department heads in the audience, what I would suggest, and we've done it in different ways, that as you make your notations to go department by department, if you have questions within their budget. I can guarantee you, there's not much you're going to see that you haven't seen the last four or five years. So there's not going to be that much. But if there's any, for instance, capital projects, I'm sure we may talk a little bit about the penny money. But basically, all those budgets going line by line is just going to be a waste of time because you've seen it all before. There's nothing special in them. But as you look through it and go through it for questions or something, all the department heads will be in the audience. So what I just intend to do after our presentation to give that to you is to have them available to answer any questions for you and stuff. We can talk about other items that you may want to add or if you've got anything that you don't think is necessary to delete, we can start talking about those and do all the funds. And I think we can get through most of this budget, especially since I plan on bringing you a balanced budget in that evening. We do have a tentative, a couple other dates set. We've also got commission meetings in the past. We've put updates on the budget, the end of the upcoming commission meetings until the time we have the public hearings. So we've got opportunities to discuss some of the things. But I think it's going to be straightforward. You're not going to see a lot new. Obviously, you're going to be happy with a budget that doesn't go to the reserve. So I think we can get it done, we can get most of it done and prepared. And then any questions you have, anything you suggest, we can bring back in one of those later meetings and be prepared to meet the public hearings in September.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have a comment. I'm happy to announce that the city will be conducting our second Citizens Academy. Those dates are from August 2nd through October 12th. And anyone interested, we have 10 to date signed up. We usually have a class size of 25. So if anyone's interested, they can go online to get an application, call the clerk's office. I do also see a member from our first Citizens Academy, Mrs. Wagner, here tonight. And she could vouch that we all, it's exciting and we all look forward to inducting it.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
I just want to announce that we have a wine walk coming up Saturday. Those are very popular in the city. You can start either at the Chamber downtown or one at the docks on the Sponge Docks. And if you want more information, call 727-942-9463 to buy tickets in advance. I'm also happy to have been selected for Leadership Pinellas. I know that David did this last year and recommended that I also apply and had a couple of other people recommend that I apply and I was selected. So I'm excited to be starting that next month. It's training for more, training to find out more about what the county does and the state does. And it includes a trip to Tallahassee. And so I'm excited to do this. It's a year-long process and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lowery? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. I just have a request I want to ask the City Manager. Our next regular commission meeting, the first one in August, I guess that would be, could I get an update on Sunset Beach and the dredging and the boat kind of launch that we were talking about? I mean, this has been going on for about four years, and I want to see, I want to make sure that it's budgeted, and how far along we're coming with that, and is Mr. Function in charge?
And hopefully, we'll have good news that we've been waiting four years on by then, so yes, we can bring it to, we can bring it to that meeting to give you an update, that hopefully, will be through the part of, you know, going through and getting this project done, we'll have the final big approval, and we'll have some idea of the people that will be proceeding, so we'll present that at the August meeting.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank whoever took care of the person that was tying their boat up to the tree at every weekend, you know, like three days, you know, three days out of the weekend. For the past year or so, I've been noticing it, he ties up to a tree at Craig Park, and I noticed that he's gone, so thank you for taking care of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, thank you. I want to congratulate Commissioner Seber for being accepted into Leadership Pinellas. I was class of 2015, it was very valuable, and I told some of my colleagues on there, they will see a more polished side of Tarpon Springs than you than what they saw in me, and for Tallahassee, a trip just knows what happens in Tallahassee, stays in Tallahassee, that's very important to re-remember that. I'm very excited about the balanced budget, but I'll save my excitement for the budget workshop, for that, that is a long time coming. Just, I do want to thank our police department, as you know, they're under fire, not our police department per se, but in general, in this nation, literally being, you know, sniped out, and I want to thank all of our men and women who put on that, that uniform each day, not knowing if they will come home, we shall thank them when we see them, and I hope in the budget session, if there's anything that our men and women need to be safe, I think we're all ready to, to, to pro, 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 provide that for them, but we should keep them in our thoughts and prayers, and again, thank them when we see them and interact with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lakouris, I would like to congratulate you and all the staff who are going to bring us a balanced budget for 2017, has been years since we were able to do that, congratulations, I'm looking forward to see that next Tuesday. Well, that concludes our regular session, and it's adjourned at 8:22.
Stay safe. I'm sick of sitting on TV at night, I'm tired. You know, Peter hit it on the head when he said about, I said it the other night, I was a holiday, I mean, I was only four years old, but I mean, you know, seeing what I saw in the sixties on TV, I think this is what I feel like we're heading towards again.
Good night, Mr. Seber.
Yeah.
Say hi to him.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it sure is. All right. So what do we, your press, what are you doing? Why? I said, I was hoping cheap when you walked in, I said, ooh, you should back.
Just like a most of them are there.